Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of Monday, August 20, 2018. We're meeting at a bit of an unusual time. We're meeting at 5:30. Our actual call to order time is 5:32. Tonight, we're going to have a fairly quiet meeting, I guess is the best way to describe it. We're in the midst of doing the town manager's evaluation, and so tonight is when we're going to read each other's evaluations and then work on our composite evaluation of the town manager. We also have some other business to take into account, and so we may take that in order first, unless there's something anyone needs to announce or to mention regarding the agenda. But once we finish with that, then we will begin the reading, which is a long period of people reading through five different evaluations. So we'll start with our action discussion item, which is a notice of intent to convert use of land. WD Kohl's Incorporated, MGL 61, Section 8, Parcel 3C 13. We took this up last time. There were three different parcels that were under consideration. I guess one is actually really ready for our action. The other two, I think, needs more -- they're a little more subtle in what needs to be done relative to that. Do you have anything to share with us on this at all?
I don't.
I don't think anything's changed from last time. I think it's just a matter of we have motion language that's been run through the town council press, as it were, to make it appropriate for what our need is. So would someone like to read the motion? Yes?
I just read it quickly myself, and it is -- it does have more information and more detail than last -- what we struggled with last week. Okay. I move that the Select Board not exercise the right of first refusal granted to the town under Mass General Law, Chapter 61, to purchase a .096 acre parcel of land located off Leverett Road, being a portion of property described in deeds recorded with the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Book 1213, Page 346, and in Book 774, Page 411, and to be sold to WD Kohl's Inc. to Alexei in Svetlana Peskov for consideration of $2,000 and to execute a notice of non-exercise to evidence said release.
Second, and we have a second. Is there further discussion?
I wonder, I realize we had council work on it this time since they hadn't had a chance last time, but I would like to insert the M for Mass General Law. I know that in legal documents, they often skip it, but...
I did it verbally, so you wanted it to be awesome.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One absence, so four zero one absence. On our agenda is the Town Manager Performance Evaluation Review of Individual Evaluations on your desk tonight and soon to be released to the packet are each of our individual evaluation documents, a composite of just the ratings that we did, and then a draft, with the word "draft" on it, thankfully, of a memo that I wrote that's trying to bring all five of those into a sensible whole, which we will discuss. But we'll start by reading. Hopefully, Mr. Wald will be joining us soon. Is there anything else anyone wants to mention relative to those? If not, then I think thrilling television that is us reading.
I guess the only question is just to confirm the process that you've gone through in prior years. I assume you've met with the town manager?
We have. We have. We met at the end of the week after these were due and discussed them a little bit. And so, you know, he's aware of the content of all of those. He has had them much the same length of time I have. Looked through them.
Thank you.
That's an interesting page.
Mr. Ray Carey to return. So I think it's good.
That is the one advantage of being the chair. It's the only one. It's the only advantage to be the chair when it comes to the eval process.
Sally's okay with the revised course package. Because they were gonna be, because I only have a lot to use today.
Oh. I thought about that.
It's on the timeline. Nobody ever looks at the timeline.
It's grammatically correct.
I'm going to check under 61.
I figured you'd be interested.
Everybody else is going to vote against this here for 61.
Too late.
Yes. I was confirming it was Jake, because I have him right there.
There were words.
And we were discussing pizza.
Thank you.
Doug, I don't know when you want to inquire with others. I'm okay to reconvene any time.
I'm almost ready, but I'm not ready.
So it's a pretty substantial number of things. And tried to make some reference to almost every one of those in the summary. I did find a typo on page nine where there should be an R instead of a, it's not you, it's your. Definitely get that corrected. But I'd love to hear what, what people think about the evaluation generally, specifics, the memo itself. I think any of those topics are completely appropriate. On page nine? In the paragraph that's, that's above the dotted line, third one above the dotted line, "The board was evenly split relative to U performance."
Ah, right, one of those words that's not the right word.
Right. It's a word, but not the correct one for that spot in that sentence. It's the possessive, but... Yes?
I have, on page four, I just think you might want to substitute a different word just because it clanged when I saw it, but I swear it's the only wordsmithing thing I'll ask about.
I didn't know what word.
On page four, paragraph three, "Previous to her retirement," just sounds weird, but okay, pick a different word or keep it, but prior. It's another PR word, it's fine. And then just in terms of factually, on page five, fourth paragraph from the bottom, "About affordable housing." You phrase it differently in your, well, we all phrased it slightly differently in our evaluations, but in this text, I don't think it's really accurate to say that our SHI has increased by 26 units. And I'm in fact not even sure that we only get to count 26 because sometimes we get to count more.
Oh, right, that might, we might count the whole thing.
And so I just think maybe you want to just use the phrasing from somewhere else rather than trying to make it seem like it's that direct. But maybe Ms. Kruger has a better way to phrase it.
I could just take out, by 26 units and just say increasing has resulted in SHI.
That would work.
Increasing.
So people comment on that, sort of colonize.
Yeah.
When I went through and I looked at the data on many fronts, including the fact that it was only tenet of, of that, like we have a category about affordable housing and we have two things to use to measure that, the SHI and shelter. And there's no empty block for encouraging and advocating for reducing affordable housing. SHI is a lousy goal. We even want to keep track and it would be far worse if that's the goal compared to the number. We are spending the block, the category, you know, it's grayed out because we don't comment on that, but that really should be a comment, right? If, you know, we increase 26 units at that development in our affordable inventory. But it's well, the whole effort is well beyond the SHI number, which really isn't important.
It's about the community need for affordable housing.
So I just kind of... So, I just, I mean, oh, maybe it's this way, we should probably, definitely, I think we might just want to, for, for, bigger points. Do you want to also say?
So, I could just follow up. I, I understand the words you're saying. I think that we, over the years, worked really hard to stick with the same broad categories and have different things that we called out underneath them very specifically. Back in the day, we didn't necessarily call out the subsidized housing inventory at all as being particularly relevant or just buried within the rest of it. So, but I totally hear.
Yes.
I totally hear what you're saying in terms of broadening, not, not because the broad topic isn't therefore getting enough attention because the two underlying things are too specific. We wanted to make sure there was something specific as opposed to just the broad topic, but that then prevented that from being, so I'm, I'm starting to make notes on evaluation tips for the future, and I hope others are too, but I put that SHI is not, and being that specific is not what we should limit the affordable housing focus to. It should have more able to be discussed than that fact.
Well, and just since we're going to talk about affordable housing, I think there's, there's affordable housing with capital A as far as measurable for things like SHI, but there's lots of other measures of affordability that we can promote and, and need in town as well.
There's lots of other measures.
Right. Mr. Wall?
Just on that, I mean, one of the problems is that these things aren't always within a town manager's control, so it's difficult because they want the town to advocate for these things and to some extent the manager can advocate, but there's very little, you know, producing mid-priced ranch houses, not in his wheelhouse, so.
He's going to take up a second job.
Yeah.
Which is actually a segue to a general comment that I have, it's sort of been on my mind all the years I've done these evaluations, which means all the years that I've been on the select board. We set forth a very ambitious set of goals for our managers, which I've always viewed as to be our priorities, things we would like to see accomplished, and we'd like to see progress towards all of them. But I think that it's unrealistic to expect that we're going to be able to make progress on all of them for varieties of reasons. One is that they are so ambitious, and the second is that in the end, manager, whoever manager may be, is only one person, and there's a limit to how much can be accomplished, and it's important somehow that that gets recognized. And I've always felt like, in the end, we really do recognize it, but it's a fairly nuanced thing that we're doing. As we're passing this torch onto our body, it's important that we somehow engage that conversation, and I, and so I wonder whether there should be something in the general cover memo that Mr. Slaughter has written that kind of alludes to this general topic of whether, sort of just recognizing the extent of what is there and the recognition that you do as much as you can and as many as you can, and that is an important measure for us, but that you can't do it all, no one can do it all.
I would say on that, you know, I, I wrote in, in the sort of summary part of mine, it said, "Every year has its unforeseen challenges and obstacles which prevent us from reaching or even making progress on some of our goals." So that was, in a sense, my one sentence attempt to sort of recognize that there's, you know, there's a lot of things we ask for. I, I'm always impressed, both with Mr. Bachmann and past managers, in how much, you know, for all the things we write down and ask them to do, how much progress gets made on how many things. And it's, it's really quite impressive in that regard, the, the volume that gets done. And I recognize, and you, you've said this in any of your, in your self-review and your, and your mid-year report to us, that, you know, it's, it's a team of people that are doing the work, but nonetheless, you know, you're, you're guiding that group of folks through that process and, and, you know, delegating those tasks and, and trusting them to get things accomplished. So I'm always really, you know, pleased and impressed by the number of these things that get attended to in a pretty significant way every year. Mr. Wall?
I think you addressed that also in passing at several points in your excellent summary, you know, because I'm not, there's quite a range of opinions, you say, and the thing that would, that always strikes me about these things is that, I mean, partly depends on how much caffeine you've had or how much sleep you've had or what mood you're in, but that even if we give different rankings according to the boxes, we're all often pretty much saying the same thing. So it could be that something hasn't gotten done because we're overloaded or because the staff aren't there or something isn't happening, or there's just too much on the plate. And so depending on one's point of view, one could write down, maybe not commendable, it's satisfactory, needs improvement, or not if information. So that's, I mean, I think that's a good thing, that we're always pretty much on the same wavelength, even if we have different rankings. If you look at the pros or if you have the extended conversation, we're seeing the same kind of things and maybe judging differently. I don't know if this is the point to talk about the general categories, but one thing that strike, you know, always strikes me like when I've done the thing and not the year before, that either the number of the categories or the wording is problematic because, you know, to me satisfactory sounds like the grade school report card where you kind of showed up and did stuff but didn't really get an A. You know, commendable sounds like it's good, but, you know, it's, it seems to be that if, you know, if we had five categories, you know, really, you know, outstanding or whatever, I could, the problem is we expect good service and we get it from our town staff, but some of the satisfactory, commendable thing always seems a little bit difficult to me, whether because the numbers of categories or the wording. And I don't know if more granularity would be helpful or would just complicate the whole task where there needs to be.
Ms. Kruger?
I'll move on to that point, because I afterwards made a couple notes. Sometimes if one year something is like really a crisis, let's say student behavior, you know, and actions have been taken to mitigate and come up with new things, then you get a commendable. But if nothing external is really, you know, all the systems have been put in place and everything's going along smoothly, then you get a satisfactory. Because, so that's just, that's the nature of the beast. I mean, I wrote in my narrative, you know, it's sort of frustrating to make the boxes work, but there aren't a lot of choices, because, so I realized some of the satisfactories are because the job is getting done, but there's nothing extraordinary to respond to, and so you're not going to get a commendable because there's like not a big hoopla like a, you know, some crisis where other things that have come up that weren't really even in our goals, that I think we all mentioned, like the healthcare trust and the zero energy buy-in and working on marijuana, I mean, there's a bunch of things we couldn't have anticipated per se a year ago. So this, goals are kind of our map of, as Andy said, what's important to us to track, but they don't always work for commendable, satisfactory, so it's, there's always, I'm always frustrated with doing it, and I don't know what the, that there's better ways. But I, to Andy's point earlier, Doug, about kind of was like your concluding sentence, might want to, in the preface to your, this is really like a letter to the public, and to a future council, and to the manager, to put something in about, we recognize that nobody is going to do all of these all the time because it's a very ambitious set of things, and we're reflecting what we identify as priorities in a certain snapshot of time when we develop the rules.
So I thought you already did that in paragraph three of your first page, but if people want that beefed up, I don't object to that, but I thought that was exactly what that was saying, if you want it made ever more clearer, feel free, but I thought that adequately.
The third paragraph or the fourth?
Yep, the third.
Just like word recognized?
No, don't think it hurts to beef it up a little bit. But if you want to, I'm, I'm just not sure you want to repeat, I'm not saying, I'm saying don't put it somewhere else in here as well, just beef that up.
Add it to there, yeah, it should be near the beginning.
If you want to beef that up, add it there.
I went back and forth about adding another sentence or set of that paragraph or not, and ended up not, but I will. I'm hesitant to quote myself too directly. You know, I could just give you mine and call it a day, but that seems a little, I think, not toward the ethos.
I think you should use the sentence you used, feel free to just tack it on there, I think that works perfectly well.
Change the font, make it really obvious.
I thought you did a really good job on the composite, Doug, it's really hard, I really don't have any issues.
You can say I won't miss doing it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a valuable thing that we do, I, I really do, and, and I think it hopefully provides the manager with, with, you know, you know, proper feedback and, and help as far as, you know, framing his, his work, whether it be in the coming months or years or whatever, but, but, but it is not an easy or fun thing to do, but.
Actually, it's a topic I think it'd be good to return to at the end of the discussion because it really segues into what is our recommendation for the council on a process that would work in a thirteen-person body, and.
It crossed my mind a few times when I was working on this, I'm like, wow.
I, so I think we should return to it, but not until we've finished the central business here.
Yeah. Yes.
So skipping over all those comments, and, and I just have to push back a little bit, Mr. Steinberg, on the unrealistic expectations, and having been doing this particular form or format twice as long as you've been doing it.
Ooh, pull the rank.
Yes, I did, all those years, that, well, if we're going to talk about all those years, then I'm going to double them. And I do think that up until this point, although it's extremely hard to work with in many respects for the things we bring up every year, I think it has been an interesting point to get us to this point where five people can say, here's the whole universe of things our community cares about, some years you're going to be able to focus on some things and some years not. And I think it's totally reasonable that we say, gee, this needs more attention, but you know, obviously you're doing this other stuff over here that's doing really well. But to just throw out a number of things in hopes that there will be this nice tight little four-goal thing that will then meet everybody's expectations is something we can talk about process-wise for recommendations for the next group, especially since there's so many more of them and we obviously can't use this format, we would never recommend this format to thirteen of them. But I think that's part of where it came from is because, well, I know it's part of where it came from, because when I originally got on the select board, there were people who each wanted to write their own completely separate evaluation of the manager, and based on no shared goals. And so that really wasn't going to work. And so in order to sort of encompass everyone's feelings about everything, we ended up with this ginormous thing that realistically no human being can do every aspect every year, it's just how does it ebb and flow over the years? So I think that's something that we'll want to explain to the council, like, like that's how that happened, but you don't want to do it this way, like find another way to try and address some of those things, because this way is not, it's barely worked for the five of us to have this humongous group of things, and the amount of time that this town manager and the ones prior have had to spend to self-evaluate is also a huge investment of time in addition to doing the actual work itself.
I, I was not suggesting anything about the goals themselves because I think that you've stated already so clearly, I probably, I don't really need to restate it, why there are that number of goals. It's the more public recognition as a part of our evaluation, but more importantly, our recognition to our manager that we have this large number of goals and we have to be realistic about our expectations, and that manager has to be realistic about his expectations so that there's not frustration built on either side by an implication that you, that every one of them has to be in, you know, a top of the chart, because I don't think that that's, you know, just not humanly possible, and it's not possible because the town doesn't have the resources to do all of it.
Just to return a little bit to one of the things Mr. Wall said, that even though we may rate differently from our different perspectives, I thought the issues and the topics and the challenges that we noticed were really similar, and so in that way I felt comfortable with our review. Of course, we all get the same slice of information, you know, we're here on Monday nights, we get the reports, we get the emails, so we don't know, you know, there's some things I shouldn't and wouldn't really know enough about to evaluate, you know, what goes on in, in the department level, but in terms of our role and vantage point, it seemed like we did pretty much touch on the same things. And so that was, you might have noticed that when you did your composite, the themes were really similar.
Right, there were a few cases where someone recalled a particular thing and others didn't, or vice versa, but more often than not, we're recalling similar things and using this as examples of, of, you know, you know, working toward or meeting goals. So that, in that sense, it's, you know, possible to sort of even do the composite because there is some alignment there. If we were in five completely different directions, this would be probably, you know, twice as long and half as clear. Were there other suggestions about content in the, in the memo itself? I mean, I do want to take advice from you guys and, and make edits as necessary to, to clean that up. I'll certainly, you know, add a little bit to that front page to, to enhance that paragraph a little bit, but I don't know if there were any other comments relative to content or typographical errors or anything else, for that matter. I'd take any and all commentary on form and structure and content and.
Well, I don't know if it belongs in the intro, but every time, every year we go through this, and there was a year we didn't, which was the year that Mr. Bachmann started, so, Mr. Steinberg, you didn't do this every single year on the board on this one, that very few people have to have their personnel evaluation done in public on TV. It's awkward for us, it must be, I can only imagine awkward for the manager, and I don't know if it makes sense to recognize that, but it's particularly challenging, something process. Very few people have, I mean, personnel reviews are hard enough, I never liked them either side of the table, and this is just, you know, we've gotten used to it, we've formalized it, it's a particularly peculiar way to talk about somebody's job performance, so. And at some point tonight, I'd like to hear from Mr. Bachmann if any of this was helpful or resonated, so I know that's going to come up soon.
It's interesting you say that, Ms. Kruger, because when I was doing a little bit of assistance to the Charter Commission back in that days, I actually had some conversations with people in elsewhere about evaluation processes of managers because that was a topic that was of particular interest to the Charter Commission. And I had a, I have a friend who teaches in the Public Administration Program at the University of Kansas, which is a fairly large, well-known program that touches a lot of states around the country. I had the discussion with him, and he was commenting, without my having to prompt it, he just knew about it, that Massachusetts is one of the few states that has this anomalous procedure that it has to be in public, that most states do not, and that, he did cite a couple of examples, but he was, when I was talking about what, what would you recommend as a good procedure, for all of his expertise and his work in a number of different states, he kind of threw his hands in the air because he didn't really have any grand insights as to how we deal with this very peculiar set of circumstances that. set of circumstances that's thrown to us by our legislature. And when I spoke with the member of a city council in another state and asked how they did the process, of course, I instantly realized in the conversation that there was a stupid question to even ask because of this very fact.
Perhaps it's based in preternical roots and putting people in stocks to embarrass them in front of the whole town or something. But, you know, it has that feel, doesn't it? Yes.
Along those lines, maybe we could, maybe you could just insert a sentence, and it doesn't even have to be long, but in between, on page one, one, two, three, four, five, in between paragraphs four and five. Because we talk about, you can't get, in paragraph three, we talk about, you can't get everything done. Then it's art and science. And then, by the way, it's in public. And truly, I don't, no one else faces this. I mean, the President of the United States, you know, doesn't have a goal set that's agreed to by anyone that then he gets rated on. I mean, all kinds of crazy things happen. But, I mean, nobody else does this.
Chancellor, nobody has.
This doesn't happen in front of shareholders. I mean, it's just, it's insane when you really think about it. So I do think it is worth, because there are a lot of people out in the community who are newly engaged in learning about what we're doing here and may not fully appreciate that, that that's just not how it works anyplace else, like you said, with your friend who's experienced it elsewhere.
School superintendents are the.
That's it.
Are the two, you know, town managers and school superintendents in Massachusetts. It is an extraordinarily public process.
Mentioning something about that, I think, would be really valuable.
Okay.
And it has its advantages in terms of transparency and public information, but it also has a downside.
Just as an observation, I was, when I was putting the sort of, you start with the easy stuff when you do this. So I was putting together the sections near the back and the section where it talks about the evaluation process information. So, you know, I'd read this in the Charter, but I hadn't in a while. And I look and it's a single sentence about the evaluation. The town council shall conduct an annual review for the purpose of assessing the town manager's performance. That's it.
Good luck with that.
And so I'm not saying that's good or bad. I just was shocked at how brief it was relative to what we have, which is, you know, much more precise. And, you know, again, good and bad about both of those. It gives them some latitude to sort of form their own methodology, which will have to work with as many people as they have. But anyway.
To follow up on that, for one of the, Mr. Steinberg may have been involved in more of these conversations, but one particular conversation I had with several members of the Charter Commission was that they, it started out longer and then they tried to say things that actually didn't comply with open meeting. And so then it was like, you know what? Just make it shorter. And then deal with whatever current rules there are moving forward. And so that's part of the reason. Whereas the Town Government Act, I still will say, the Town Government Act is like poetry in comparison to the Charter. Town Government Act is much shorter. It was honed over many more years. And so it's not surprising that you can't necessarily just draw an arrow from one to the other and have it make sense. But, yeah, they were trying to avoid getting in trouble. So they made it short.
Well, you know, it's like, they talk about the sort of length of different documents and sort of, you know, state constitutions generally have been revised a number of times, but they on average have 40,000 words in them, whereas the U.S. Constitution has like a few thousand. You know, Gettysburg Address was less than 275 words, you know. So it's sometimes brevity is for the best in those things. So unless there's other comment on this, I'm happy to make those couple of additions and try to have those prepared for us for our Friday meeting. Mr. Bachmann, did you have any sort of comment or?
He's had two hours to just figure it out or something.
A little more than that, but he said to you on camera.
Yeah. So I just want to thank you for your work. I mean, it's an arduous process. You're right about that. It's, I think it's by necessity. It has to be transparent. It's important for the public to see you doing your work and for you to be holding me accountable. I think you've been considerate in how you've approached it. You've been frank in your assessments. And I found a lot of the comments very constructive. And getting direction and more clarity about what you want to see me do better is helpful to me. And when I was reading it, I found it oddly exhilarating. And mostly because I was thinking, oh, there's more opportunity here. I think for, like, most people, I tend to concentrate on the things that I'm comfortable with. I'm in my comfort zone, so I keep focusing on that. And then there's certain things that I think the board's job is to yoke around and say, yeah, well, look at this too. And you haven't paid enough attention. It might be because it's outside my comfort zone. Or there's a lot of reasons why the things that you've identified, we could go through them, you know, timing wasn't right or whatever it was. But I think that there's a conversation to be had there. So it was, it was nice to hear the things that you felt like I was doing well. It's important for me to hear the things that I just missed that I might have a blind spot to. And I was talking about this earlier today with some colleagues, that we all, you know, have that and that it's useful to have someone say, you got to pay attention to this. So I think that, you know, while this may not be the model for the incoming council, I think, you know, in addition to the public as your memo, which is really a lot, it's a work of art to pull all this together into very few pages you had to pull it into, that you're able to, that it's a conversation, or it's a letter to the public, but also to the incoming council because they're going to go back and look at this and say, how did they do it? How are we going to do it? And this is going to be a real model for them. So, you know, it takes an enormous amount of time by a lot of people to pull this off. And the, but I think the important piece of it that, is that you take it very seriously. And I said, I think that really sets a tone for the entire organization, that you set a standard for how you want performance evaluations to be looked at by your staff. So I think that that's a, the seriousness of purpose you bring to this endeavor is really important because it engages me in saying, we need to ramp up our performance review because I think that that's, because you've set the example that this is a really high priority thing and you expect, your expectations are high like that. So I appreciate the amount of time that you put into it. I know it's the last thing you want to do when you, when it's 10 o'clock at night and you go like, now I have to do this thing. But it's not something that any of you have dashed off. I can tell by reading your evaluations. So just want to thank you for that. And the one thing I have found oddly clarifying, not oddly, but interestingly, clarifying, disclarifying, is when you say, we really want this to happen, that when you have fewer goals, there's a lot of assessments on here. There's 58 different things, as the chair said. But if you, as a board, said, there are three things we really want to see done this year, whatever it is, or the council, because there are so many, it's hard to say. But you say, like, these are the things we really want done. That would be really helpful because the board articulating that and having, you know, when you're part of an organization, you should be able to enunciate what your, what your goals are for the organization, and everybody in the organization should say that. And we have lots of values that we can talk about. But if we said, you know, whatever the goal is that you said is, these are our top three, five, whatever it is, priorities, and everybody in the town can say it, it really would give a lot of boost to our mission, I think, in what we do here. So just basically, thank you for the work that you put into it.
Mr. Steinberg?
Thank you for your comments. And there was one thing that we added in, because we head to this year, and I was part of, a large part of wanting to see it added, was the transition if the Charter passed, and then the Charter did pass. Because I think that it's important to us that the success of the town is what we're about, not the success of the Select Board. And regardless of what happened, we want to see it going forward. I think that Chair touched on it well. But I, it did take a lot of time. I know it took a lot of your time this year. And if anything, it'd be, if I was going to beef anything up, it would be along the lines of just saying even a little bit more about the amount of time that it took to get the transition going as soon as the Charter passed and to make sure that we were on the right path to getting from our current form of government to where we're going.
To add to what Mr. Steinberg said, and I think it is worth, in a way, highlighting that near the introduction. You know, we knew that a transition was coming. We flagged that that's really important. But we didn't know we were going to have a bunch of legal challenges. I mean, each one of those things represents, you know, whatever efforts bandwidth ours and back and forth and town resources with council and others. So it was actually, in some ways, more arduous. Maybe we were naive because we had the dates challenged. We had a special act to do. We had change of, a bunch of things that. And I think we were clear in our meetings that it was really important to this board to keep on track with that. And the manager and the other related staff did. So it's more than just, you know, the one line, transition to Charter. There were a bunch of dramas along the way that we didn't anticipate.
And I certainly, you know, in writing that particular piece, you know, I went back and forth about, how do I capture that, you know, without it being, you know, 10 sentences? But I can definitely make an effort to try to add a little bit more to that effect. I mean, I certainly wanted to touch on that. And that gets to that idea of what I had said in my own evaluation about, you know, things arising that sort of take you away from doing other work. And I think that, as an example, there were a couple of things that came up that ended up taking time. And it's time well spent, but at the same time, it was time not spent on other things. So, you know, it's, I want to acknowledge those things.
But I think that's one of those things, one of those areas where the board, the board had, the board listened to the voters. The voters spoke. The board took a leadership role in that and did not equivocate. There was no like, oh, should we, should we? You know, there was never, it was like, we know the direction that we're, we've been told to by the voters. And I think that that sort of strength of leadership was really important for the work that we were doing, you know, to figure things out. Because knowing that was the direction and having the support and the direction of the board was really important to that, I think.
Does that suggest, at some point, we go back through these 58 goals and star three of them at some point? I mean, and not, not.
Ms. Krueger?
So, not to be difficult, but we did look at a draft of goals briefly already, and we will look at that again tonight. And that is exactly what that was, is trying to pull out the things that we've talked about. So when we get to that section, it's, that is definitely something that we had discussed as a group and then saw a draft of, which is still not just three. It's more like 12. And so if it needs to be three, it's going to be interesting.
First tier, second tier, third tier.
Whereas, I believe is the phrase. Therefore.
Here to fore.
Here to fore, that's right. I do have copies of the most recent edition of that, which I will share with us if, but I do want to make sure that we have completed talking about the evaluation.
So as I believe you indicated, aside from the sort of beefing up a couple of areas that we talked about, which are we still allowed to say with so many vegetarians at the table? But, okay, beefing up sections that, and then this will be available on Friday for us to review again. And our meeting is at 8:00 or 8:30 on Friday?
It is at 8:00. And we will have, I think, two liquor licenses. So we'll start in this room and then we'll go into executive session at that point. Well, we'll probably discuss the edits to this and then.
Right. Just in case you came up with some brilliant other thing that is not similar to what we've already talked about. Nice try.
I just wanted to make sure I had entered it at 8:00 and not 8:30.
Right.
I wanted to make sure it also said 8:00 and not 8:30 because I wasn't sure it was, it's not actually posted yet. And so I wanted to be 100% certain that my understanding was the adequate, was the accurate one. Okay. So it will get posted tomorrow because otherwise Wednesday.
Or very, very early on Wednesday morning and probably tomorrow afternoon.
Or 8:00.
Yeah, all right. Right. But yes, it will, it will get posted tomorrow.
Just so we can get in those last-minute liquor licenses.
That's right. And we're being business-friendly, trying to get people, you know, sort of off the ground and moving on with their, with their, with their businesses. I think there was one other question I think I had for the board about this. So I thank you all for taking the time to read through it and your kind words relative to my draft. And so I will make the suggested edits and bring this Friday. Yes?
So my question then is, and I may just be jumping ahead of what you were about to say anyway, is would you prefer, at this point, that we talk more about the next set of goals or about the structure tips for the, for the future council? Are we going to get a chance to talk about both of those tonight? And I personally don't care when, which one we talk about, but I hope we'll do both just because we're kind of all enmeshed in it now.
I am open to either. So it's the board's pleasure as far as whether they prefer to, since we're talking about this structure and how that might compare to a future structure, maybe that will be the place to start and have a little bit of a conversation about. And then, you know, sort of advice we would give. And then we can come into the goals because that's about sort of where I think we go in the next few months with the manager. So. Process a little bit. Maybe we should continue that with having suggestions for our incoming council.
So if we're going that way, then the notes I already made, beyond the things that everybody, not everybody may not have captured them perfectly, just said. But some notes I'd made prior to that are, you know, if you were using a form like this and you were making an X, you would want to sort of force people to answer a question rather than letting it be blank. Because we, we all run into that sooner or later because the format is difficult. But then I have point two, don't use this format. So problem solved. Which, which also relates to the conversation about if you do use something like this, we talked about what is commendable really mean? What is satisfactory really mean? We talked in several ways about the fact that we might say the exact same thing in a sentence but come up with two different ratings. So like, what does that even mean? And it would, it wouldn't be any different if it was a four, or a three, or a seven, or a 2.5, if the words are the same. And so maybe, you know, cautioning the future council that maybe, on the one hand, you don't want it to just be pros, right? You want to have some kind of categorization. But even we, who've worked with this for several years now in a row, still struggle with it ourselves. And like, we're kind of all on the same page, even though we interpret things a little differently. So I don't really know the answer to that. But one suggestion that I thought we might come back to, and actually, Mr. Bachmann sort of touched on it, is now that we regularly do staff evaluations of department heads, what rating system that uses? I mean, we have no, we have no reason to know to know what that evaluation form looks like, but if there are parts of that that are particularly satisfactory, then maybe it makes sense for those to mesh to some degree, in terms of just how then department heads would hear from you, the same way you would hear from the council, in terms of readings, I don't like that word, but evaluation terms. So that might be worth knowing, because that's, we've talked about how other towns do it, which means, which is actually nowhere near as well as we do. We are way ahead of the pack on this. But how do we do it internally that we could build on?
I can make just one quick comment on that, you know, talking about the ratings and how to make those categories sort of work for folks. And, you know, in the education field, they talk a lot about norms. You know, you find operating norms or rubrics for grading. So like, when they're evaluating writing samples of kids, or if you get into companies that do testing, they often talk about, you know, how do the graders of the tests, you know, sort of consistently evaluate those things? Some of the, you know, thinking that people have done over time around that could be very helpful as far as trying to get consistency around what each of the terms mean and which circumstances, and what kind of terms or the right kinds of terms to even use to begin with. But that's a potential suggestion. And there are folks in town that know about that stuff, because there are businesses that have been in town and near town that, that do that kind of work all the time. You know, you were going to say about this work?
Well, I went to Hampshire College. And in graduate school, I wrote an essay about, for the student newspaper, about how embarrassing it was to be graded, because it seemed to be, you know, reducing everything to a grade seemed to be irrelevant to my professional, my, coming out of the professional sector, going to graduate school, and then having somebody grade me was, not was what I was about. I wanted to hear the feedback that people were giving me. And so, but I also understand that, that the public wants to know, you know, and the press wants to say, good, bad, great, average, you know, they want that little, they don't want to go through a Hampshire transcript that's 47 pages long. They want to know what's, what's the headline. And I think that's also, that's something we'll, I assume you'll talk about on Friday or whatever, is the press release that will need to accompany something like this. So I think that is a hard one, because you do, the forced, the forced choice method is one thing, but then having a understanding of what that means, because right now, I think you're right, satisfactory is that, to me, when I evaluate people, and we've had this in my previous organization, everybody was excellent in one division, and everybody was average, and then next. It wasn't like the divisions were that different, it's just the person grading them said, I love everybody, they're great. And the other person was like, they're all doing their job, they're fine, you know? And it's like, they're all doing fine. So it's like, if there's an agreement on what the metric is or the rubric is for doing that, so.
Other thoughts at the moment about what we might offer to the incoming council?
Well, I think in some ways that new council is going to have to come at this in a fresh way. We have something that works for us, and I think it's building the goals that in some ways is as challenging or as important as, you know, eight to 12 months later, using them as an evaluation tool. And I think as the council gets familiar with each other and their job, they're going to have to review the goals and kind of own them and make them their own. Otherwise, as we've found a couple of years back, without good goals, it's pretty hard to make the evaluation form work. Or if they don't, at one point, ours didn't mesh. So I don't know, I mean, this is a great sort of set of samples for them to build off of, but I think they're almost going to have to take the Lego thing apart and rebuild it in order for it to make sense to them.
Ms. Steinberg?
I have a couple of thoughts. One is that it's really hard to devise a system, because even if we were, you know, continuing as a select board and there was not being a change, there's two circumstances that can change this entire dynamic of how this goes on. One is wholesale dissatisfaction with the performance of a future manager, and the other is one or two members of the elected select board who have a totally anomalous view from everybody else. And I think we've seen it in other boards and committees in town, but it's not one that I've had to deal with as a member of the select board, thankfully. So, but any system is going to have to recognize that either of those can happen. And the other thing that I think we really need to remind our future council of is that what works for a five-person board doesn't work for a 13-person council, simply because it's just a different set of circumstances. To expect the chair to be able to pull together 13 forms, even if they're generally consistent, is probably an impossibility. Five is probably, for the two of you who have done it, barely manageable. And...
I was saying, five's plenty. I was thinking about the notion of doing, having 13. It would take them, it would take forever. It would take a really long time to do.
And so you'd have to be getting less in order to do it, or have something different. I mean, because you just, you know, the length of what we have done, if you had tried to put together 13 of them, is impossible. And I think we should recognize that for ourselves and for them.
I do think that's important to point out to them. It certainly came up when they were talking about the number of counselors at charter commission meetings, and people kept saying, more, more, more. And I said, how are you guys going to do evaluations? Like, five is really hard. And regional school committees really struggle to give a useful evaluation, given the handcuffs that they're already provided by the state, et cetera, plus the wonderful public process. It's really, really hard. And it takes many, 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 many hours to do it as it is. One of the other things I think associated with that that I'd like us to also feel like we could communicate to the council, and I'm jotting these notes down, I don't know who's writing this, because this isn't part of the press release, this is our separate, you know, booklet of things to tell the future council. We're not, the, how do I want to say this? We're on the same team right now.
Yep.
They're not going to be on the same team. They're still on Team Amherst, right? We talked about how important it, what matters to us is the community, not per se the select board, but is a different, literally a different relationship. They are not part of the executive anymore. And so I think they need to think about that, too, and to keep that in mind to not just think, I mean, the few, some of them aren't familiar with town government at all, so not a problem. But for the ones that are, to not think of themselves as one of a 13-member select board, because they ain't, they're the legislature instead. And that sounds just like, well, sure, whatever. But like, how do you compare that? Well, we've never, we've asked town meeting members for input to the evaluation, right? And we occasionally get some, but that's a very different animal. And so that, I think, including that in our explanation of why we also think that trying to reuse a form that was developed together as part of the same branch, whereas I certainly hope they work very closely with the town manager on an appropriate evaluation form, they're, the relationship's just not the same. The hiring relationship is very similar, but beyond that, it's not the same.
The, when I had the conversation with my friend out at KU, we were talking about that, and when I had a similar conversation with the select, with the council member in the city that I was talking to, which is about our size, the process generally runs along the lines that the chair of the body, whether that chair be an elected mayor or otherwise, has a little bit of a larger role in actually doing the evaluation and getting input from other members of the elected body, because, you know, most communities have a council manager form of government. And whether there's a mayor who's chairing of the council, or an elected chair of the council, and since that's the largest number of types of governments and percentage in the country, I mean, there's plenty of models out there. And I think that that, I gather, is what the common approach is. And then, of course, they have one advantage in most places that we don't have, which is that the chair would then sit down with the rest of the council in executive session to talk about it. So here's my proposed evaluation. And then they talk about it in an executive session, mull it out, you know, put, come up with where they're going to be. And then it gets put together and put out as the final valuation. But there is a role, I mean, ultimately, it is a role of the entire council to in some way participate in that, even though it's done in that fashion. So I think that it is something that the council is going to have to wrestle with how to go about doing this, but they are going to have a role. It's sort of inevitable in the construct of the government, because who else is going to do it? Plus, as we say, it's in the charter.
The other part, I think, we, if we could work in a sentence along, associated with that, is also, just as we touched on earlier, when we realized the year that we had a complete, we were having a disconnect between our form and the goals that we developed nine months before then, and then went to fill out the form and went, wait, what? Is as they adopt goals, which, you know, we're going to hand them one set and say, this is what we asked for for the last couple of months while we were here, you guys do what you want. But they need to be thinking about those two things at the same time. So they don't necessarily have to come up with the final format while they're thinking about the goals, but they need to be thinking, if we're setting this goal, how are we going to figure out?
They pair.
Who's going to measure it?
They pair together.
How, how does it pair? How do they measure it? And so I know, I hope they will listen to you explain that to them at length, Mr. Bachmann, because I know you understand exactly what we're talking about. And I think that a lot of them, because of the limitations of open meeting law and maybe having served on a board before, where you're just sitting in a quiet room, talking to your executive director, a very different scenario. And so I think that would be super helpful to recognize that they should definitely be talking about, it's one thing to say we have a goal, and that sounds really pretty, but what are we going to do with that when it comes time to do the evaluation?
To perhaps a segue to goals from that last point, I've got copies, which I'll hand to you guys.
I'm going to put these away if we're...
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Because I sort of collated them in a weird way. We don't have enough clips, so...
So what I'm handing to each of you is a small packet of, on top is the, the changed version, and then underneath is a redlined version of the most recent. So we had a conversation last time, I think subsequently that was sent to, subsequent to our conversation, I think it was last week, the following day, Ms. Brewer had made some additional edits, I think, based on our conversation, and sent this?
They're in blue, so if you pull out the redlined version, there's like, I can each...
They're blue lined.
That we just got. So we got the redlined before, and now there's blue lined.
Right.
And that's the ads. That's the ads from last meeting, yeah. And then here's the nice clean one.
Yeah, the top one is the, the version.
As if these had all been accepted. Right.
And so if you, we'll take a few moments to look over the red slash blue line version. Hmm?
There's only 24.
Only 24, showing great discipline.
Well, less than half of them.
Exactly.
It's progress.
Over in November, one quarter of the year.
Someone's already done, though.
Mm-hmm.
You're ahead of the game. It smells of already done, though. Ms. Brewer?
So if I could just, um, reiterate something I said mostly last time, which is that, as you noticed, there's no red after page two, because I didn't touch the rest, it's just the same as it was, and it's just FYI sort of thing. Um, part of the reason I chose the things that, I mean, I mostly chose things we directly talked about and others I just inserted, um, in the, in the first page and a half, is that I wanted to make sure we captured things that we knew were likely to happen, like, ooh, look, we've already done the MassWorks grant application, yay. But if we didn't call them out here, probably wouldn't get, potentially would not get captured by the future council and we're too late for our evaluation. So sort of, you know, hit the ground running in terms of, look at all that's already been accomplished in these, in these ensuing months in between, because I know these are things that are being worked on and are probably going to get done anyway, as opposed to us saying, ooh, here's a brand new thing you never thought of before. I'm hoping that that's what this mostly captures. In fact, I even thought about saying something about four boards in there and I was like, nah, I'm not even gonna go there, because we're so used to that, plus the budget process does change under the charter and however, that's part of the transition plan. But I want, the things I called out were things that I actually largely thought could be accomplished, e- even though some of them will just be telling us, this is how far we got on this. And then it'll be up to the town manager and the council to work out what the next definition of that goal will be.
Steinberg?
Yeah, I have several thoughts, but first I want to thank Ms. Brewer for doing the work on keeping this going on this. Thank you. I also have to say, as a matter of some humor, as I was going through this, again, got to relationships with select board, almost was willing to put in an asterisk, maintain a professional relationship with us despite the fact, you know, you'll never be evaluated by us again.
Not to put too violently.
But aside from that, getting back to some other things, uh, the, um, and I'll just go in order now, on, um, page two, under A.
Are you working from the red or the?
I'm working from the, the red one.
Okay.
That's where I took mine as. A three, which is on page two. You put in, including updating select board after the regional school district planning board. Um, that seems superfluous, because everything we're saying should be, um, keeping us informed. I was wondering if we're gonna pick one of the entire group out, why that one?
So, if I may. So, the first one, under long range planning, says, update select board on continued implementation of the charter transition plan. That's because that's what we want. We don't want a charter transition plan that includes four items in it that somebody tells us is done. We wanna know, tell us some stuff that you're doing associated with the charter transition plan that you're glad that we're making progress on or that you're frustrated that we're not making progress on. And so then ensuring coordinated planning is basically, there might not be anything to do in it, in one of these upcoming months prior to December, associated with that particular thing. So it could just be, you know what, nobody's working on this, everybody's taking a break until January on this. And that would be fine. Whereas if we just left it at, as ensuring, the part without including updating select board, it would just, then the answer would be, well, no news is no news. So my idea, most of these are in fact, I'll say some variation on updating the select board, propose something to select board, tell the select board something, just kinda so we know what's going on, and then other things are more like, actually do it. So I saw it as more similar to A than, than not. And B, same thing, Fort River School feasibility plan. He could say, I'm doing, staff is there and they're doing the work they need to do. Well, I think we've already made clear in the evaluation that we need some more information so that we can help the community come along on that process. And that may just be a simple verbal update, or it may be a memo or something at some point in the next three months. So that's how I saw what those words meant. So if they need to say something else or mean something else, that's what I was trying to get at.
I guess that, uh, in, in a, not perfectly fine with leaving it, but when you get to, on page three, using this version, um, after fiscal management and relationships with select board, number two, um, number one, providing regular communication to select board about matters relevant to their responsibilities and concerns, that's such, that's a blanket.
But see, these aren't our goals. The only thing we're asking him for is the short term. We're only going up to page two. We're done after pa- after five G. The rest is just of the current select board for consideration by the new town council. That's why I said, what I should've said is, stop reading after it turns, it stops being read, because I didn't expect us, I don't think those things any longer apply to what's happening with the town manager over the next three months. I think the things at the beginning apply.
Andy, I know you have a list, but just on that point, maybe if this really is, in a way, it's a, it's a working document for us for the next three months, but it's also sort of a letter to future council, maybe where that break is, there needs to be, and maybe that isn't this red, be.
Says for consideration by new town council.
Maybe that just, maybe it's just hard to read because it's red underlined, but some way to make it clear that these are what we already had and we're, we're hoping they could be useful, but, um, they're really not. The focus of this document is really the short term for use by the select board. Uh, it does say, less applicable to town council expectations, do the different nature, I don't know. Just make sure that that's really clear, kind of what you just said in plain English, like, stop reading unless, some guidance from us.
Yeah, or, I, I think with what you stated first is fine. Um, though it does then beg a question that I have on one other section. If we've recognized, as we did the evaluation, that there was a weakness in the way we worded goals before, if we're not gonna pay any attention to the wording that we're putting forward after, after the dotted lines, so to speak.
Right, right.
Then we don't get there. And I'll give you my very specific example so that you know, and that is, when I was doing the evaluation and we were on V, community intergovernmental relations, and then there was, wait a minute, let me just make sure it was the right one. Uh, yes. And then, um, we had, um, developing partnerships and strategies through regular meetings with Amherst College and Hampshire College. We didn't treat UMass the same way. We kind of, uh, put UTAC in there. Well, UTAC is kind of, it's only as useful as UTAC turns out to be, and it seemed that there was a missing piece that something along the lines of the way that B and C are stated should have been also included for the university.
I don't disagree. I will say that the reason my, I didn't ask for that sort of, you know, parallel in those is because A applies to, only to the university. It doesn't have anything to do with Hampshire and Amherst College to a huge degree, except maybe for when Amherst College brings in their, um, reunions. And we were trying to be, and so I see what your point is, though, to make it, to make it clear that that, that some are talking about UMass, some are talking about all three, and some are talking about them separately. And so I wonder if, um, could, what, what would be the best? I don't wanna change this document. And so I'm wondering, I mean, from that, for that purpose, I'm thinking maybe that makes more sense, does that make more sense in our cover where we're talking, in the composite we were just talking about, in terms of the limitations we realized we faced as we did the ratings? Or does it belong in our evaluation tips for the future sort of document? Because I'm loathe to go in and touch the eighteen goals, but I also want us to show our learning of what we just realized about our eighteen goals, too.
So there are two, two sections that I was wondering about as well, on five, um, C and five E, where you're asking for the manager to propose appropriate relationships between the town and UTAC and then propose relationships between the town council and, uh, the CCC.
Yep.
And I was really not clear if you wanted, sort of like, oh, what should, what's, like for the five, um, E, that would seem actually more logical to come from the board members who are serving on CCC, uh, in some ways than, than town manager saying, this is what it should be. But I just needed more clarity on what you meant by that.
I think I was the one who added that. Um, just, for example, the CCC has scheduled meetings through, I think, November, they just set out a schedule for November two thousand and eighteen, and then it starts up again in January. Well, I won't be representing the town on the CCC, so working with the council to decide how the council, if at all, wants to be represented on the CCC. I can't speak for Mr. Steinberg, but our, our membership there is as representatives of the town on the select board, and so we, in a sense, disappear. So what would be the process or the relationship going forward? We just wanted to flag, um, these other, yeah, that were members of, so we could give point, you know, well, pick somebody like this, or send so-and-so, go make them crazy, whatever, but, um, so we, we can give advice, but we won't be that representative, um, in that way.
Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, interesting questions to how some of those things, and this is a good example of, and there probably gonna be many, they're gonna, gonna come along. Uh, on the CCC, though, you also have, um, the captain from police department, Captain Gunderson, you have somebody from the fire department, you have the, um, public health director who are also members of the CCC. Is the town gonna in the future be represented by staff or we, or should somebody from the council also be on it? And does that become a volunteer thing for two members of the council to raise their hands? Or is it something that you should take a larger leadership role in doing? It probably is worth some, some thought.
Yeah. Is what we were talking about, yeah.
Well, and I think also, I mean, there's others, you know, who represents us at PVTA is another example, or the MPO, which, you know, traditionally it's been either the manager or someone from the select board, meaning an executive branch person.
Sure.
Um, you know, the, for example, PVTA, you don't, you know, you're a designee, so it doesn't matter. You can, you could pick somebody, literally anybody off the street if you chose to, but, but it's beneficial to have people that are there that also then are plugged in regularly with the, you know, town government and budgets and things like that.
We probably missed a few. So, uh, you were, you were on your list, Mr. Steinberg. There was one area that I thought we missed, and maybe I'm just not seeing it after, after reading all of these and then reading the goals again, but in our evaluations tonight, we all, um, identified the need, one way or another, to deal with the fact that there's four, maybe five capital projects on the horizon and needing to do that. But I don't see that in the short-term goals. Now, it's not, not gonna get, and I don't see it in the long-term goals. So we said it's really important to start working with the, um, you know, some kind of strategy to approach that, but I just don't see it in the goals.
In the long-term goals. So which were our goals that we just worked on.
Right, so, and I looked for it and I probably did just miss it.
It's under fiscal management.
But, um, I would, I would say to move that to short-term under fiscal, not because it's gonna be done, but to make sure that that stays as an active item under, that's being worked on even as we speak.
So I made a conscious choice not to put it there.
So I'm making a conscious choice to ask that you put it there.
Because we, these, I mean, you can decide that other things need to go away, but these twenty odd things that are here already are things that I thought we communicated or we'd indicated over other discussions, were things that needed to be done before December. That's not gonna get done before December. They're not gonna stop thinking about it before December, because we don't mention it in our twenty-four things, because it's kind of like the overriding problem. But you can't do anything, staff cannot do anything with that project other than coming up with some new spreadsheets before the council comes on board. Because they can't just come up with a whole plan on how to get the council on board with what they decided to do. I mean, it's gonna be a joint effort from day one. Whereas to me, these things are things entirely up to the town manager to do.
So it's good to appreciate your thinking, but you're a person who authored this and now we're all commenting on it, so I think we're bringing different vantage points. Mr. Bachman earlier said it's really helpful to differentiate the things that are really our priorities, and there are, I believe, other things in here that probably won't get completed either. So in the, in the interest of trying to underscore what we, we, select board, think are the priorities, I think that's one of the maybe three to five things I'd pull out of our evaluation. You can leave it over there in the long-term, don't need to read this part, it was ours, forget about it, but I don't think it, it serves that goal well to leave it there. But, um, other people on the board might have different opinions.
I guess what I'm not understanding is, I perhaps, I did make, I did in fact say that phrase earlier, but I don't have any intention of it being true, that they're going to ignore it, because they're gonna, if they are useful town counselors, they're going to read our evaluation, which includes the goals, which also will include this document as part of that. And, you know, beyond the fact that everyone knows that these are the four focus, I guess I would ask you then, if you do want that moved or copied into, it's not taken away from, but it's copied into, then the answer is not what the current goal is. The current goal is develop strategy and provide leadership to implement funding. That's, that's not gonna happen between now and December. So what's another way of indicating that it stays in front, but it's not that whole picture?
Where the citation is in the one.
It's on page three of the redlined, under two E. And so we've been carrying it in one variation or another.
Page three, two E.
Page three, two E.
The top.
Are you looking at the redline version?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're on page three.
Oh, two, okay, wait a minute, I was looking at Roman numeral two, sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, just regular number two.
Develop strategy and provide, implement funding.
Because I.
So what I'm hearing is you're suggesting that if we, if we bring that into the short term, then it needs to be more finely articulated to, to make it something that can be actually accomplished. So maybe more something, some particular aspect.
Proposed approach so that, for working on this, I, I don't know, but I just, two, two E, it's sort of, looks a little lost. I think that's, I mean, if we're really gonna kind of try to pull out what we think are the highlights.
So, I mean, one of the things that the council needs to decide is, is there agreement that these are the four made?
going to read our evaluation, which includes the goals, which also will include this document as part of that. And, you know, beyond the fact that everyone knows that these are the four focus, I guess I would ask you then, if you do want that moved, or copied into, it's not taken away from, but it's copied into, then the answer is not what the current goal is. The current goal is develop strategy and provide leadership to implement funding. That's, that's not gonna happen between now and December. So, what's another way of indicating that it stays in front, but it's not that whole picture?
Where the citation is in the one.
It's on page three of the redlined, under two E. And so, we've been carrying it in one variation or another.
Page three, two E?
Page three, two E. Are you looking at the redlined version?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're on page three.
Oh, two, okay, wait a minute. There's a, I was looking at Roman numeral two, sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, just regular number two.
Develop strategy and provide, implement funding.
So what I'm hearing is you're suggesting that if we, if we bring that into the short term, then it needs to be more finely articulated to, to make it something that can be actually accomplished. So maybe more something, some particular aspect.
Proposed approach, so that, for working on this, I, I don't know, but I just, two, two E, it's sort of, looks a little lost. I think that's, I mean, if we're really gonna kind of try to pull out what we think are the highlights.
So, I mean, one of the things that the council needs to decide is, is there agreement that these are the four major capital projects? Or, might the council say, we don't care about a DPW facility, or a fire station, or whatever it is that they don't care about? And so, don't develop a plan with that in play. Right now, we've, the town, through the select board, has articulated these as the four major, and sometimes we say there's a fifth or a sixth.
Yes.
But the first conversation is, do we have an agreement, what the, what are the major capital projects in the next decade that we want to address? And that's the big issue. It's, I mean, it flows from the capital improvement plan, you know, so we do have a process that's been involved. But, you sort of want to reiterate those values from this, from the council, I think.
Then where we talk about transition planning, does the transition planning have something that says, what, you know, what are the top three things that need to be brought to the council, you know, early? Because we think, or we all agree, including the manager, that those are the most, you know, those are really important, because there's a lot of bureaucratic stuff that they have to do, and how are they gonna do appointments? But to me, that, that's such a seminal question, that group. So, maybe that's where it goes. Which...
So does it fit more under, on the redlined version on page two, where it says, long-range planning, and A says, update select board on continued implementation of the charter transition plan, specifically including?
Well, then I think there should be two or three things under there, what we, we think are the most important for transition planning. The council might not agree with us.
As opposed to the kind of transition planning that's make sure we know how to set the tax rate, given the timings off of the way we normally set the tax rate?
How many chairs are in this room or something? That's, to me, that's not as important.
But setting the tax rate is important.
Right. No, I didn't say that. Right. And maybe, maybe that is one of the three things that come up first in the transition plan.
What I'm saying is, that's already called out in one. So do you want to call it out as a separate thing under fiscal management then instead? Or, I mean, I don't care. Obviously, there's a bunch of different ways to do it.
I mean, you're much more familiar with where the things are.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what is it, reflecting back to what I said earlier, and, and Mr. Slatter tried to say, what is it that we're, that we're, instead of the wording, develop a strategy and provide leadership, it's more along the lines of, one of the very first things you're surely talking to the council about is, and then as Mr. Bachman said, he, you know, they have to all agree that those, it's obvious to us, those are the projects, but that may not be obvious to the council.
Maybe part of my confusion is three A, update select board on continued implementation of the charter transition plan. We don't actually have a charter transition plan.
Just because we haven't seen it doesn't mean we don't, that doesn't exist.
On the agenda.
Okay. So maybe we do, and maybe then it's charter transition plan, capital T, capital P.
Yet I didn't know what it was called. I just figured there was one.
Well, you can, that's generic enough. Charter transition plan, to, you know, to include identification of priority issues, include a capital planning. And if you guys have some other ones, tack them in. So, yeah, you can go there.
Think it fits in there?
Yeah. So we're saying, yeah, we want to see that transition plan, and in that, identify priority, it, policy areas, you know, not the nitty-gritty.
Charter transition plan that identifies priority.
Policy areas, policy and planning areas. And then, I just thought of that one, but that probably is broad enough to cover all of it. Besides, they had to change something.
For example. But...
Okay.
Mr. Steinberg, did you have other things that you wanted to offer? I mean...
Well, there are two things that I know that need to be worked on, and I believe that Mr. Bachman is gonna work on these, whether we state them or not. Why we're, whether we disappear from them until we go out of business is the question. When is the beginning of the FY20 budget process, which is gonna happen with a meeting which we are a part of in October, when projections are spent, are sent out, and a process is engaged with the soon-to-be-defunct finance committee to establish guidelines for the libraries and schools as far as their budget expectations, so that there can be work that begins similar to all prior years. The other one is that we've been informed about, and we would hope continues, is the first-floor administration staffing planning. I don't think that, but that is manager's responsibility. It's not our responsibility. In prior years, we'd just say, go forth and keep us informed.
So I have more to report on that at the next meeting, but it does lead me to the question on, on four A, where it says, while planning for new hires to be confirmed by the incoming town council, I don't understand that phrase. I mean, I understand the words, but review our policies and procedures to promote hiring and retention practices. I guess I'm not really sure what, what that, while planning for new hires means exactly.
So, I tried to pick that up from our current goals, where we all said, in one fashion or another, some variation of, we don't have any written plans that we, that we're aware of around diversity hiring, and how we might more creatively address diverse hires. And different people brought up different issues associated with that. But given that we have major hires that are about to happen, just like we already had a couple of major hires, and we're, we remain unaware of substantial focus on how we're going to improve the diversity of our hiring process, that it seemed like the right moment to mention that as ongoing goal, because we asked about diversity, we didn't necessarily feel like we got it thus far, and that's why it's in there, because there are new hires that are the ones that you're gonna be doing probably very short-term, because they're ones that you've identified for a long time, and we're waiting for the formal government to change on various issues. But then, any other additional new hires, you're going to have to be, it's, it's part of the being prepared for the fact that, right now, you hire whoever you want, whenever you want to, and the select board has nothing to say about it. That won't be true with the council. So, given that we've identified here the need for some focus on how we can address diversity in different ways, because the things that generic towns are doing isn't working to increase diversity, it's not certainly just an amorous problem, it's just an amorous value, to be prepared not for the fact that that's gonna be a much more public discussion going forward, and also, right now, are, if, if there are things, we talked about the charter transition plan, there may very well be things you're doing right now that we don't necessarily know about, but they haven't come out as part of the evaluation process. And we've said, maybe there's growing people in-house, maybe there's advertising a different way. I mean, kind of all the standard things people always throw around, is, we don't know how to solve this problem. But, that's what, I was just trying to capture that moving over, because it's not, if you weren't planning to hire anybody right now, then who cares? But, you've got a new hiring process coming up, and you've got hires you're actually probably gonna make before the council shows up, so they won't be subject to that. And just not losing sight of the diversity needs we've identified. So maybe I pulled over the wrong wording, but that was what I was trying to accomplish.
I guess what I was trying to understand is, while planning for new hires to be confirmed, I was, it felt like it was saying, while you put everything on hold until the council gets, I wasn't really sure what that, while planning for new hires to be confirmed. But you're just saying, don't forget to pay attention to our goal about diversity, and that is a value.
Right. And like, if you have anything, see, as far as I'm concerned, you might not hire anybody else until after the council comes in, because even if you really want to, you might not find the person you're looking for. And so, that's part of what it is, is that we're just in this awkward place, where we, we feel like we haven't really met that goal yet, but we don't really know what it should look like. I'm not sure we know how to evaluate when we've met it or not, except we know that our workforce will look slightly different than it does now. And so we could certainly come up with different wording there, if that's too focused on future council thing. But what I was trying to get at is, I don't know when these hires are gonna be made, and they might be before, and they might be after. And there's gonna be something new anyway.
I think on that one, maybe a little, just to tighten the wording up a little, so it's clearer. But, I, it reminded me that I did want to say something about the diversity issue. It's in the evaluation. And I think it's, it is a community goal, value, and I think we all share it. But it's also a very difficult one. Every institution that I've been part of, organization, I know the academic institutions, the ones I'm familiar with around here, struggle with this. And it's often not for lack of trying, not saying the trying has been perfect, but to just lament, oh, the composition of the, of town staff doesn't look like the composition of the community, and then sort of flagellate ourselves again and again, because we haven't made it look that way. I'm not sure how, I'm not saying that's what you, you did in writing this, but to get into a more constructive place, like maybe getting some help with coming up with specific diversity in higher best practices. Maybe we already do that, and I just don't know. And that, that's, you know, of course, what HR has been doing all along. But to articulate that to the community and to the council, that this is how we try to have a workforce that reflects our community, we may not succeed, there's a variety of reasons why that happened, hasn't happened, even in these other institutions, where they sometimes devote many resources to making that happen. So, it's hard to not get defensive when you're in a meeting or in an event, and they say, well, look at the town, and it's not doing this, or all the people in the rumor of this composition. And you say, but I, I did A, B, and C, and it didn't get me the result I wanted. So, maybe part of this goal is coming up, coming at it from a different way, whether that gets success or not, but a way to articulate it to the community, so they understand how seriously we do work at that.
I think one of the things that organizations struggle with is that the, the supply side of the, of the equation doesn't have, at present, the number of candidates. You know, that's, that's, that's not to say it's a, you know, that can be a cop-out on, on, you know, why you didn't do what you did. But at the same time, it's, it's also real. And so that's also understanding what the market is for candidates, you know, is, is an important part of that conversation, to say, you know, we did X, Y, and Z. But also, we've also looked at sort of, you know, in the broad context, you know, what is, what is the actual pool of capable people, and, and interested people, and et cetera, et cetera. So that's a part of that as well. And so that's, you know, what some organizations are doing is actually working on the pipeline process. In other words, engaging with, with, you know, universities to promote, and, you know, foster, you know, more people coming out of school with X credentials, kind of thing. But, but I think that the, what I'm hearing out of both of the, both folks here is, is that we want to articulate that in a way. And, and I think that, with regard to what's on the, on the page there, I think the, the difficulty is, is, right, the timing is one. But it's also that, given that there are things in the new charter that require confirmation by the council, I think having a sense of that as part of the transition planning, it's like, oh, we're, here's how we're preparing to, you know, put these kinds of things in front of the council. Yes.
I mean, I would suggest that you just start with the word review, because I think it's a high enough value that you've articulated, both in my evaluation, but just in general.
Okay. Just cut out that person.
And say, we want an update on this before we leave office. What do you do, what's your plan? What's your, what are you doing? I mean, one thing, you know, within the last three weeks, I've had a conversation with the library director, and she was bemoaning, you know, we talk about diversity, and she says, you think you've got problems. Libraries are notoriously bad on diver, and so she, we talked about what she could do, and one of the things she did is went over to the school district and talked with the people in the school district, because they're really good, actually, I think, pretty good, at attracting and recruiting diverse work, diverse applicant pool. So she's trying to take tips from them on things that they could do. So I think what this does is it elevates it to a primary part of our conversation for the select board, before you leave office, where you want an affirmative conversation about what are we doing with this? I think that, that answers it for me. That answers my question, at least.
So would it work to say, under four, staff and personnel relations, A, just cross out that first line altogether, and insert, update select board on policies and procedures to promote, because that scans with everything else. So you're updating us on, hey, we've been talking about it, we're gonna keep talking about it. That works.
Just, I had flagged a while back, just when I was making notes, on, under five G, similarly, proposed ways of increasing diversity in committee membership, as you will be appointing most committees with confirmation by town council. And there, I kind of, maybe I was, like, overthinking, but we, we use diversity a lot, and it doesn't always mean the same thing. So are we talking about diversity in racial background, socioeconomic, different identities, or opinion? Because I've, I've seen a number of candidates make statements about diversity in meaning diversity of opinion. So, I, it, I mean, I like the word diversity, but I think in that one, increasing diversity in committee membership, it still means different things to different people. Where I think in higher, we're probably more talking about racial.
Well, so I'd look at language diversity, too, so we can serve more people.
Right. Mm-hmm. So maybe we want to spell out, you know, EG, and twenty, I don't, I don't know, just, I got hung up on that one.
So, I'll give you my document, if you want to write diversity of thought on it, because I am not putting, you're gonna have to put that in purple or green or something, because I am not writing diversity of thought. That just, it makes me insane, but I hear exactly what you're saying. There are people who say that. And I think part of the reason I went ahead, even though, again, we tried generally not too much to refer to the council in these goals, is that what's different as it has been, the select board appoints a ton of committees right now, and it's been on us to find more ways of managing that diversity, which we have, you know, done to the degree that we've done. But it's, it's like, totally not our problem anymore. It's really our problem now, at this point. And so, any ideas that have been perking, now would be a good time to hear about them.
Ms. Steinberg, just, in that instance about the committee diversity, did you mean it in the same way as when you were looking at the goal for higher?
Absolutely.
Younger people, if it's an older committee, you're talking about racial and...
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about all. I'm talking about all the issues. Race, class, social, yes. All the things, the select board and you, we're all looking at already in committee membership, to be, I mean, partly, some, again, this is taking credit for things we're already doing, but maybe being able to articulate them a little better, that we've been able, we've been trying, we will continue finding new ways to try, but that we appreciate that this is an ongoing issue, especially, you know, as the whole process changes. So...
Ms. Steinberg, will you make some?
Yeah, I'm, I have notes on those two, basically on those two, the part, the part about long-range planning with the charter transition plan that identifies priority policy and planning areas, for example, major capital projects. And the staff and personnel relations, A, just cutting out that first line and saying, update select board on, were the two that I finally came to the conclusion about.
And the other one was, just to go back and take a look at what is really the paragraph that is the last in red, whether there's any way to clarify that, what the transition is.
Will you want this back on the agenda for Friday?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, do it tomorrow.
Dispatch it.
Maybe we might be able to confirm it, because sooner the better in some respects, because the clock's ticking, right?
And we should probably call it out specifically in the list of topics, that we're gonna try and approve the goals, if people feel ready to approve them after they look at them again. I don't know that I'm gonna be able to come, I'm gonna have to Google again how to make yet another color show up.
You know, I was, I was gonna recommend we just do a final copy. You know, I was going to recommend we just do a final copy based on this conversation. I don't think we need to get into the weeds on redlining. You know, you might want to say, if you, you know, go to these three places, that's what I did based on our -- let's not go through this level of detail. I think we're done with it with our comments, so final, a final black and white.
Yeah.
Blue letterhead if you like.
Thank you. Appreciate the work on that because it seems so simple, but it's not.
Just trying to copy some things over.
Exactly. It's like, I think a half a dozen things we can get done in the next month or two. That seems like it. All right. But thank you again. And so, actually, just speaking of that, I think, was there anything you wanted to mention to us this evening? We didn't generally answer any member reports that anybody had to share with us. If not, I'll just touch base. We are meeting at 8:00 AM, I believe, in this room because we have a couple of liquor licenses that are before us before we finish the manager's evaluation. And then after that, our next two meetings are on Wednesdays, the 5th of September and the 12th of September, just a little out of the ordinary, but the holidays of varying kinds are coming into play in September, so that impacts our schedule. And so, unless there's something else, I think we're ready to adjourn unless --
I actually have a question about, and I am imagining that Mr. Steinberg is more familiar with this section of the Charter than I am. I actually don't know why we're having a four boards meeting associated with the budget. And, I mean, I love the four boards meetings, they're wonderful, but I'm just not sure why we're having one, given how much of the budget process has changed in terms of its timing. Is it because we -- is it more for the public education aspect of it, or, I mean, it doesn't feel to me like it should be the same as previous years, so I'm just trying to understand what we're doing.
I would suggest, and maybe, Mr. Steinberg, if you don't mind, I'll -- my thinking was about that was that we still want to -- so there's a couple of things that we do at that meeting. One of the primary ones, though, is make our best guesses what we think the revenue for the coming year is going to be. So I think that's a good thing to have out there as early as we always do. Do I think that, you know, the Finance Committee will make budget guidelines and that we'll have our own budget policy guidelines? No, I don't think we'll do either of those that have traditionally followed that meeting. But I do think painting the picture of what the, you know, state of affairs is relative to what we think our budget might look like from a revenue standpoint and expenses standpoint is a good thing to sort of frame, even though the election won't have happened yet.
I'm going to take the next stab and then turn to Mr. Bachmann to add to it if he feels he needs to. But we are in a transition period, and -- but at the same time, transition means you want to keep going. You can't stop. And so, you need to have the superintendent and the library director begin to develop budgets, and the town manager has to begin to develop a budget for the municipal departments for the next year. And so, you need to get those projections as you would on a generally the same timetable because it has to do with the state fiscal year in the end, when it comes down to, we're still, you know, a year is a year, it's going to go on. And the -- so then comes the question is, well, how does the superintendent, for example, know how much money to put into the budget? What's the bottom line? Needs guidance. And the, you know, I've talked with Mr. Bachmann about this, and he's given some thought about how that process can go forward in an orderly way. And the guidelines from a finance committee probably will look nothing like they have in previous years because they're very different function. But on the other hand, they have the expertise and they can play a valuable role, and I think that's what's being thought about. So that sort of gets you back to all of the boards except us. So if you want to have a three-board meeting, have us not participate, that would be an option, but it'd be good for us to give guidance and to be able to sort of speak to the municipal needs even though we're not going to be here when the budget is presented.
See, I'm seeing a real disconnect there because normally, we just get talked at at the four boards meeting. There's not any discussion. There's three questions, me and two finance committee members, one of which didn't hear the answer the first time, and then I ask something crazy, and then we're done, and we walk out of the room. So there is no -- I mean, so if we're going to do it differently this year, I just think we need to understand that. I understood, I assumed, the part about finance committee really doesn't give guideline. This budget process is different moving forward. Yes, it's a budget. Yes, you have to talk to department heads. Yes, people need to know what portions they have. But the reality is, the process is different. The finance committee isn't going to give guidelines unless they were weirdly doing that for a budget they don't have any control over in the future, which I don't think meets with the transition provision. The Budget Coordinating Group, I could see having a role in discussing, and that is largely those same bodies, right, just representatives from there. And so, I could see potentially having a meeting of that before the transition takes place. But I don't see how -- I do get the part about presenting what the trends look like. That totally makes sense to me in terms of, it's a thing we always do at that time of year, it's a good thing for everybody to have going on, but it's not feeding the same machine that creates the budget. It's on a very different timeline with a different process. And so, unless we're going to encourage this to be kind of like people's last hurrah at putting in goals or something, I think I just heard we aren't going to be doing Select Board goals, and we don't normally do them, and that's setting at the four boards. So I'm a little confused.
I'm going to take my own shot at it. I think partly for the continuity, to continue with the budget development process. And I think the four boards meetings, in my experience, it's partly public education. It educates the members and whoever, you know, might want to listen in. And if I were running for Council, I'd maybe want to, that might be a meeting I might want to listen to either on tape or be present for. So I think it has a public education function. When you get some precedent, it starts to put out some of the thinking about the budget as the departments and others are preparing, and then hopefully that helps the Council to transition. I've never felt like that meeting had a whole lot to do with the guidelines, per se. It's mostly presentation with a couple of questions. And I think it's important to kind of keep that form going for now, but maybe it's superfluous. I don't know.
The other thing is, is that it has been important in prior years that the library trustees and the school committees be there to hear the presentation about the financial realities because otherwise, they're going to get to the point where the development of the budget takes place and is presented by their chief executive, the library director, the superintendent, and they're going to say, "Why isn't there more money? Why aren't you asking for more money?" And you need a process that explains, "This is the reality," and sort of gives some imprimatur to the amount of money that there, that is being put in as the bottom line of that budget so that they understand at least what goes on. And I think if we're going to not do this process, we better come up with another one that is going to have equal credibility, or I think that there could be a problem that is going to be, have to be dealt with by the Council in its first year. And I'm not sure that that is particularly a healthy thing to happen either.
So my intention is to follow the sort of path we've laid out previously because I don't know how quickly the Council's going to ramp up a finance committee and be ready to go. And also, it fits into our timing. We're going to be doing our budget preparations along the same timeframe anyway. I think there are already rumblings in different departments that aren't under the Select Board about that same question about money. And I think having that shared expectation, and also, it's sort of an external discipline on us to get that work done and to share it out so that that's an important piece for us to do. That's -- but just in general, we've been sort of following our same path for budget development. We're following our budgets, our budget schedule is similar to previous years. We're not saying, "Oh, we've got three more months to play around with." We might upfront, we're not going to use that time upfront. It might come in later when the Council is educating itself, and maybe we're doing more stuff with the Council. But at the beginning, our budget development is going to happen this calendar year in terms of the internal staff hearings and things like that.
So what I'm still trying to understand, then, is I'm totally good, as I think I said the first time, with the educational part of it. For the community, they watch the tape, they know what's going on, and absolutely having be four boards so they're all here rather than if they so happen to watch it. So they're all really hearing the same source of information. I would just like to understand how we're making clear to those other bodies, meaning mainly the finance committee and the public, that the finance committee isn't writing guidelines this year and that the Select Board isn't writing guidelines this year. Because doesn't the finance committee sometimes meet right after the four boards meeting to start working on their guidelines, except they're not going to this year? And do they know that? And so, that's what I'm trying to understand, too, is, I mean, during this transition period, it's like, who tells them that? You know, exactly. Because all the information you're gathering is the critical part. Their part matters, but it matters differently this time, from here on out. So that sounds like a chair-to-chair conversation to me.
Right.
Yeah.
Good point.
Point taken.
Well, the finance committee is going to have to act differently. When the finance committee has always written guidelines in the past, it has been, "We would like you to develop a budget, Mr. Superintendent or Ms. Superintendent, with this bottom line. For the elementary schools, we would like to have you develop a budget for the regional schools with this bottom line, with the assumption that this is what our contribution is going to be by assessment." This year, they can't really do that because they're not going to be the ones who are going to put the budget back together again at the end. On the other hand, they could say that, "We're going out of business, but based upon our experience, this is what we suggest might be an amount for you to consider, you and the town manager to consider, to give some additional guidance." And in reality, the guidelines are always been the same as the dollar amounts that have been put forward in the projected budget as presented, that gets discussed, but it never varies. And I wouldn't expect it to happen this year any different than it has any other prior year.
Yeah, I think that, what I'm sort of thinking is that the finance committee, if they offered guidelines, it would be advice to the Council. That's really what it would boil down to, which the Council might fully ignore, much like our advice to them.
Yep, our advice.
I think it's valuable to sort of articulate it, though, because they do have that sort of experience of having gone through budgets for some time.
So if that's true, and we're not going to try and convince them not to issue guidelines, then should we put a copy of our last set of guidelines in an upcoming packet so we can be thinking about whether or not we want to do some variation of it one last time since the finance committee might be doing something one last time in its current format? Or, and then we could at least look at it and then tell ourselves, "Nah, our goals cover it, and that's close enough." Or, yes, actually, this brings one particular issue to mind that we want to give future advice to the town council on. It could maybe be an easy way of addressing some of our future letter to town council stuff.
One of the difficult things that the Council is going to have to confront and deal with, as well as the town manager going forward, is that the regional budget still has to coincide with other town meetings of other communities. Otherwise, you have three other communities developing a budget, passing it, and then it's binding on the largest community without the largest community ever having a chance to participate in the process. We did think about that when I was working with the Charter Commission. And so, it's not like you can make all of these other realities disappear, and that being a big one, not to mention the assessment method, which we've already talked about in the last --
Oops.
So if there isn't anything else, which I don't think there is, I would take a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Ever please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:58. Thank you all very much. We'll see you on Friday.